It is six o'clock. We'll call our meeting to order, Allegheny County Commissioners, June the 6th meeting. If we would, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance.
... And the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle Packerly, please.
Let us pray. How grateful we are, O God, for the gift of this day and all the beauty that you have offered to us, and for the gift of your Spirit moving in creative in new ways among us. As we gather together this evening, give to us the fruit of your Spirit, that it might be evidenced in all that we say and think and do. May your wisdom, your patience, your peace, your kindness, and your justice be made known in this place and throughout all this world. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. One change up on the agenda, we need to add JCPC appointment. So make that correction on your agenda.
Chairman, there's one deletion also, I believe. If you look at item E under two, it says DPSLE Grant Fund Budget Amendment. That needs to be omitted.
Which one was it?
It's letter E under General Business Section Two.
All right. Those made, do I hear a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? Five of eight. I guess everybody's looked over the minutes for the 5/16 special meeting. If anyone has any comments or any corrections, let it be known. If not, ask for a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion here, second.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? Five of eight. The comment time. Anyone having anything to say to public comment section, maybe now's the time to come forward. Mr. Michael DeBose.
Thank you and good evening. I'm here tonight speaking simply as a resident of Allegheny County. On February 3rd, 2020, this commission passed a resolution in support of the Second Amendment, which specifically stated that you as representatives of this county would refuse to enforce or in any other manner support any legislation, federal or state, that placed additional restrictions on gun ownership. Since that time, there's been no such legislation passed, but there has been over a thousand mass shootings in this country. And in those shootings, over 50 people have been killed with assault weapons. And on May 24th, an 18-year-old young man used an AR-15 assault weapon that he legally purchased the day after his birthday to kill 19 elementary children and two of their teachers. Gun ownership isn't an emotional issue in this country. People have strong views. Gun ownership is a constitutional right. Objection to any gun restrictions, as evidenced by that resolution that you passed, is irresponsible. I've heard all of the arguments against gun restrictions. Guns don't kill people. Bad people kill people. It's not a gun issue, it's a mental health issue. The best defense against bad people with guns are good people with guns. These are all useless platitudes. What is a hard, irrefutable fact, if that 18-year-old in Uvalde had not been able to purchase that assault weapon, all or most of those 19 children would be alive today. Who knows what they might have become? Teachers, doctors, ministers, maybe even farmers. I'm not here today to change anybody's views. Unfortunately, it seems that no amount of additional deaths will shock our lawmakers into action. But I do ask that you go on record whether you continue to support that Second Amendment resolution, which in effect says you would rather see 19 children killed with assault rifle by an 18-year-old, rather than have any legislation that would prevented such a young man from purchasing such a weapon. Some of you are running for reelection. It is likely that your continued support of this resolution will get you some votes. I was here the night that that resolution was passed. This room was overflowing, and I was the single voice in opposition. But I don't think I stand alone in this county in support of reasonable gun laws. So all I ask is do you let the voters know? Let them know whether you think that the right to own a weapon whose only purpose is to kill people, multiple people, is more important than the lives of those 19 children in Uvalde, is more important than the lives of those 10 mostly elderly grocery shoppers in Buffalo, more important than the lives of those 20 churchgoers in Sutherland Springs, Texas, more important than the lives of those 58 concertgoers in Las Vegas. Just let the voters know for whom you stand. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Down to presentations, Mr. Dana Phillips, earthquake update.
Evening, everyone. Appreciate you giving us a few minutes just to give a kind of update where we're at with earthquake and a few things going on. With us this evening, Rich Trumper is here. So if you've got any questions for either one of us after this quick update, we'll be happy to answer any question. Real quick, wanted to give you an update on where we're at with our numbers with earthquake. As of June 3rd, last Friday, we have received a total of 324 applications. 324 applications. Of those 324, 285 are eligible. So meaning we have 39 applications that are currently marked ineligible, and that's either depending on ownership of the home, or they just, the applicant withdrew their application for some reason. So 285 eligible active applications is what we're working with. Of the 285, 197 of these 285 have been fully completed or funded, meaning the job is 100% complete, or our office has 100% funded the repairs. So we're real proud of that number. 50 of our projects that are remaining out there have received partial payment. So when we take a look at the projects we fully funded and the projects that we've partially funded, to date, we have funded 87% of all eligible applications for the earthquake recovery program. And we're real proud of that number. So we're really getting out there and making a difference for folks. So 87% of all the eligible applications have received full funding or in a minimum, partial funding. The last thing I wanted to mention to you about earthquake is to date, we have spent $7,291,800 in individual assistance recovery. That is money that is going directly to the local homeowners. That's the ones going to the homeowners here in Allegheny County, Surrey County, Ash County, Wilkes, mainly Allegheny. We have a few in Surrey and just a handful in the other areas, but 95%, rough number I'm estimating there, of all the money spent is right here in Allegheny County. Okay? So we're real proud of that. With that, this upcoming August will mark two years since the event. I think if you look back at the legislation that was introduced, they gave us a three-year time window to try to get everything accomplished and squared away, and we're right on target, if not past, where we should be at this point. With that said, we wanted to make an announcement and let everybody know that at the end of August of 2022, the end of August this year, we're no longer going to be accepting new applications for the earthquake recovery program. So we're asking folks, if you have some damage, let us know. Okay? Let us know. That would be two years since the event, and we want to get the word out to everybody. Let us know. We want to know if you've got damage. Let us know. We want to help. We're not going anywhere. We're going to be here until we're done, but we want to go ahead and get everybody who is eligible and everybody who had some problems in the system. Now, as you can imagine, a lot of fine folks here in Allegheny County took the approach, "I'm just going to sit back and wait and let everybody who needed some help first." Okay? We're asking those people, come to us now. If you've been sitting back and waiting, waiting for the opportunity to come in and say, "Hey, let me put my name out there," we're asking for folks to come see us now. So again, we're still going to be taking applications through the end of August, and if there is an extreme hardship after that, we certainly understand as well, and we'll certainly take a look at anything that comes that way. But the biggest message that we want to get out there is if you've got damage, get it to us. We still have some funding. We still want to help folks, and we look forward to that. So that's just a little bit of an update of where we're at. I'll be happy to answer any questions or any comments or concerns or anything anybody may have.
Just one comment. You're located at the BDC building.
Yes, sir.
Just so everybody knows.
Yes, sir. And our website is still active as well. The earthquake.nc.gov website is still active. And if folks have other concerns, they can always contact Daniel Roden with the EM office. Daniel and I talk regularly, and we get everything there. But come see us in the BDC. We're glad to help them.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I would just like to say thanks for the hard work in meeting the needs of the citizens here. It's been a tough, tough couple of years for them, so I'm glad to see folks and the help they need. From our state to this community, it means...
We appreciate that, and we appreciate the partnerships with the local folks, the local county officials. Again, I've said this to this group before, it's been fantastic. Michael and his team, the EM team, everybody. Travis up with plantings and Tony, everybody's just been fantastic to work with. And it's a great partnership, and we look forward to finishing this up on a high note.
Certainly appreciate what you guys, all of you, have done. And it's been a good relationship, and the people from this county's benefited from this, and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Next up is Via Health, Mr. Zach Shepard.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate you letting me come give you a quick update this evening. As part of our commitment, we just like to keep all of our boards of commissioners updated on things that are going on and give an opportunity for questions that I might be able to answer. And if I don't have the answers, I'll certainly get back to you. So give you just a quick overview of things, and then if you've got questions, feel free to ask me or contact me later if you've got other concerns. Here is overview of the new LME MCO map. Well, new as of January of this year. So this is after our consolidation with Cardinal. As you can see here, Via Health is in the blue, and you can see our expanded nine counties that we took on after our consolidation with Cardinal. We've also divided up our regions, our coverage area into four different regions, and have made these regional assignments based on geographic location as well as population. Here's kind of the breakdown of those regional boards. And one of the things that we saw this regional board structure doing is giving a better voice to all of the counties, instead of just having one governance board overseeing everything and everyone from that governing board having a voice. We broke it down into these regions, which gives more of a voice to each of the counties. So as you can see, Region Three includes Allegheny County, and you can see our population breakdown over here. The only outlier there is our Region One, and the reason that is, is because these seven counties were the original Smoky Mountain Counties. Those seven counties have traditionally worked with each other really closely, and they kind of wanted to keep it that way, so we kept them together. Everyone else has a pretty close distribution of population as far as regions go. Then our alternative board structure, here's how it looks. Each of the four regions, of course, has their own board, and they have appointed members that sit on our Consolidated Board of Directors. And then we also have our Child and Family Advisory Committee structure as well. Okay? And then here's the composition of our Consolidated Board of Directors, and that just gives you who we have representing the board.
This one not working.
And this is just a breakdown in our Region Three membership. You can see who's represented from each county and in their position. Then also our Board of Directors' membership. And as I said, two of our members from each regional board sit on our Consolidated Board of Directors as well. Okay, I wanted to take this opportunity to do a brief overview of what's called the Child and Family Specialty Plan, which is a plan that the Department of Health and Human Services has proposed to help cover children that are in foster care and also involved with DSS. Currently proposed, the Child and Family Specialty Plan will be a single statewide plan, and like I said, that would be available to children and youth and families in the child welfare system. So what this statewide proposal would do would be a single entity covering all of these populations across the state. And this is covering integrated physical health, behavioral health, and IDD services. Currently, only a standard plan or a tailored plan may bid to operate this Child and Family Specialty Plan. So what that means is, one of these commercial health plans that are currently operating Medicaid plans, Medicaid standard plans, or MCOs such as Via that have been awarded a tailored plan are the only entities that can bid on this plan currently. And there was some stakeholder engagement that informed the need for maybe some changes to this plan, and so the department decided to shift kind of their population, their coverage, as well as the focus from a more regional structure to a statewide structure. Okay? So here are the eligible populations. Over here to the left, we have the original eligible populations in this specialty plan. As I said, children in youth in foster care, children receiving adoption assistance, former foster youth, and minor children of individuals eligible for the specialty plan. So with this new proposal, this has expanded, the department has proposed expanding this population to include parents and guardians and custodians of children in youth in foster care, siblings of youth and children in foster care, and family members receiving CPS in-home services. So this is a huge shift in the population, and it really broadens the populations that would be served under this specialty plan. Okay? And then here are some of the benefits that we see, would see with this Child and Family Specialty Plan. It would really be designed to focus on those youth in care, in foster care, and their families that sometimes go under the radar to make sure that they get all of the services that they need. Okay? So one of the things I did want to discuss is some of the concerns about this statewide proposal that not only us at Via have, but our other LME MCOs in the state have as well. And Via has been in talks with the other LME MCOs, and we've discussed some of these concerns, and we're all in agreement that there are concerns across the board. So these are just a few of those concerns. So one of the things we're concerned, one of our concerns is a single entity managing services across the entire state. So instead of breaking it down by region, having one entity covering all 100 counties, it's a big undertaking. One of the things that we have done really well across the MCO system has been being able to engage at the local level. That's something that we take pride in, and it's something that has taken us many years to build relationships with the local community and local agencies. And of course, DSS agencies are one of those strong partners that we work with in each and every county. And I think that you could easily ask any of our DSS offices, and they could tell you what our relationship has been like with them. And I think, I would dare to say that it's been a positive, well-rounded working relationship. So one of the things that we're concerned about is those relationships under a statewide plan going away, being nonexistent anymore. Expanding this waiver, as I said, to include more populations, this will, as I said, be a lot more individuals. This will really expand the population. And so that just concerns us in how that will affect the tailored plan rollout that we have been working on now for the past couple of years. And we've really gotten ramped up to be ready to go this December, and this has kind of thrown a wrench in those plans, and it made us have to stop and think about how that's going to affect our planning. So it would also create some undue administrative burden for providers if they're having to work with another waiver vendor. So it essentially means having to build something from the ground up with a new entity. And timing. Timing is a huge deal for us because this was something that just has been thrown out this year. This proposal was thrown out, I believe, most recently in February by the department. And as I said, the MCOs are ramping up for tailored plan. We have a lot of things in the works right now. We have a lot of moving parts. This is just another moving part to throw in to the planning that makes things that much more difficult with all the things to consider. So those are just a few of our concerns about this Child and Family Specialty Plan. I think that's it. Yes. So if I have questions, if you have questions, please let me know. I know this is a lot to digest, and there are a lot of fine details with this, and we're certainly staying on top of them as we get more and more information about the rollout of this specialty plan. And I know Commissioner Luffman has garnered some support for our position, and we've been able to show that to the department. We appreciate that.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
I've got one question about Via's commitment for mental health overall, from the children to the whole age group. Percentage-wise, how much do you think Via is involved with mental health?
Percentage-wise, as in?
Of their program.
Okay.
You know, they're a multi-multi-million dollar entity. Is 10%, 20%, 50% focused on mental health?
As far as Via is concerned? Well, you know, currently, our populations are mental health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. So, you know, and if you, depending on who you talk to, sometimes there's a mix, and there's an overlap of these populations. So, you know, mental health is at the core of what we've done for years. And I would say the large percentage of what we do now is still, of course, mental health.
Michelle?
I want to make a statement that, you know, the CFSP, if it's passed, it could end up sending some of our foster children not only out of state, but very far out of state. Correct?
That is definitely a possibility. It would be an unknown as to what the entity who took that bid would be able, would be doing.
Right.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Might I add too, that one of the commitments that we have made and have undertaken just in this past week is to work across MCOs. All six MCOs have gotten together, they've heard concerns. We've heard concerns from DSS offices over the years about children moving across catchment areas. So one of the things that all six MCOs have committed to do by the time the tailored plan is enacted in December is that we will streamline that process. That process will no longer be a burden to DSS offices, to children moving across county lines and across catchment areas. So that is one commitment that we've made to our DSS partners, no matter what.
Yes? We appreciate the update, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all.
Thank you. We got a request for closed session, General Statute 143-318.11.8-6, personnel. Do I hear a motion to recess our current meeting and move to the...
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask that April Hame and Linda Edwards be included in this closed session discussion.
April and Linda both, okay.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion, second, any discussion? All in favor?
We want to do it. Ten of us, so it'll be, it'll be nice and cozy in there if we go in there.
Go in there.
We'll all get cozy. We can go inside.
Go ahead and call our meeting back to order. No action taken, closed session. Next up is general business. Budget fees for twenty-two, twenty-three. Ms. April Hand.
Who's doing?
It's the consideration of the budget and the fee schedule. April can certainly stand there.
I could certainly stand here if I'm gonna go get my notebook. I don't mind standing here and answering questions.
Bump floor for discussion on the twenty-two, twenty-three budget fees.
Consideration of the FY twenty-two, twenty-three budget along with the enclosed fee schedules.
Got questions? All right, on page... The fairground advertising budget. Let's see, four by eight sign, five hundred dollars for three years minimum.
What page, number?
Eighty-three. Why are we not advertising for events such as Streetscape, simply for a week? We have no schedule for that. All this is long-term advertising. One's having a birthday. They may wanna put it on the sign. We could make some money on that. Whereas now we have dead space.
Think we're in the process of selling advertising space.
They're not at these prices, they aren't.
Well, I don't know, but we've got-
Twenty-five hundred dollars, five times per hour for one year. But what I'm looking at is simple events. If, say, the football team is gonna go for the state championship, that's a week's worth of advertisement we might be able to put up there. The PTA for a fundraiser, something of this nature. To me, it looks like we're pricing ourselves out of the market. We're-
I don't disagree with that. I think we need to revisit the structure for either one-day events, or weekend events, or honorary acknowledgements. I think that's certainly something we need to revisit. It's not included in this-
If we can make fifty dollars for one day where, say, happy birthday to my husband. You know, it's fifty dollars we wouldn't be getting otherwise. I mean, we may advertise shave Michael's beard, hundred dollars an inch. We'd make fifty thousand dollars.
If you stayed on the bottom of my face, you'd be fine.
Okay. You know, I think that this is an area I would recommend that we table the fee schedule for advertisement on that.
What if we do this? What if we... This is only a suggestion. In order to consider the budget, we bring an amendment to the fee structure. Is this the only concerned fee structure-wise that you have? Is the fairground-
That is, as far as the advertisement at the fairgrounds.
Is there another fee structure?
Yes.
Okay.
Solid waste fees. We know that we've got a fuel surcharge now. Is this ninety-eight dollars gonna be able to continue and cover our costs for that?
Actually got the letter today. Our charge for the upcoming year is increased by a dollar and fifty-three cents per ton. That's what the three-point-two-five percent CPI identifies.
Wouldn't it be more appropriate for the residential fee schedule to go to a hundred dollars a year? That we would have the income for that fuel charge? We know we're gonna get hit.
What I would say to that is the benefit of having a recycling program and selling that material generated from that program will very closely equal what this additional cost would be. Roughly eleven thousand ton a year. You know, at some point, we're going to stop receiving earthquake damage. That was already mentioned today. I think that our enterprise fund, which the transfer facility falls under, is in good shape. I think it is at this point, and for the upcoming year, I think it is planned accordingly. Now, there may come a time, keep in mind, that we are continuing to build a temporary tipping floor to allow for the renovation of the existing facility. Once that occurs, I think then may be the right time to revisit the fee structure for the transfer facility.
I will defer to your knowledge and experience since you're the trash man.
Thank you.
Can get by without changing their tipping fees. I think that's the way it is in town.
Those are the questions that I have, Mr. Chair, and I will move to pass, make a motion that we pass the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget with associated schedules of fees.
A motion to pass it. Do I hear a second?
I've got a question on that. Are we actually voting on a budget? Should we be voting on a budget resolution? A resolution in here. That's what we've traditionally done.
Suppose that's correct.
I've never been present to vote on a budget presented this way. I mean, these are just basically straight out of here. Resolution. Funds in their section of the-
Suppose that this item goes away for today.
I do, I do actually wanna make a few comments on it besides that at whatever time's appropriate. We had a work session that I was unable to get here. I had got tied up with work and last regular Monday meeting. And there was a couple of items on there that we had some folks to come and speak about from the public hearing. I actually would like to see both of those items funded fully to their request. A lot of work on the budget and personally, I think these are areas that are are meaningful, necessary. Maybe not to the degree that some others are. I get that. Equates to, I don't have the math in front of me, but dollars for about one fair and the other. Years ago that we would promote, they reorganized, regrouped, and would come to plan. Now, I understand there's been some talk that they hadn't really came and presented. I would suggest that, you know, it might be a little hard to whenever folks, every time, anytime they come, they get sort of a act used. Makes for a tough situation for folks to come in and to be able to feel like, you know, we're partnering with them, which is what we should be doing, or we shouldn't be doing it at all. But we did say a couple of years ago that we would give them three years at a level funding to help them get off the ground. I would prefer our word in that respect. And if some feel like maybe they didn't because of how they're reporting or what they're doing, maybe we could work on that. But I would like to see those two funded. Where we fund them from, I'm open with and it's sales tax. Have that money.
Any else have any comments?
I agree with Marco.
And also-
Children of this county to be able to go to the fair and, you know, five dollars to get in and it's affordable.
It's a good way, the fair for the county to, all said, to show back, give back to the kids where they, a family of four could go, you know, and stay within their budget and have a real good time. That's I met on that also, and it's totally amounts to five thousand dollars for the five for the fair and twenty for the chamber.
And, you know, we pay for economic development in this county.
Like to see where the economic development is. We've had four businesses shut down on Main Street. We have another one that's teetering. What are we getting for this money? We have the Allegheny Economic Development Committee with eighty-seven thousand dollars in the bank. They never met for twelve years. Then whenever we shined the spotlight on them, suddenly we started having meetings. We appoint people. But still the money's sitting there. No economic activity. The Business Development Center by contract is in charge for economic development with the county. What are we getting out of them?
Also had some businesses open up and if you go out on the town on, like last Saturday night, you can see where economic development helped us out. There was a lot of people-
And we gave them twenty-three thousand dollars to do that, and they've got forty-two thousand in the bank.
Look at the TDA. I think it's a conglomerate of several organizations. The TDA's occupancy tax has doubled in the last few years. Well, now, you can all, we can all guess and wonder, the whole nine yards. But I think the chambers had a big impact on it along with the TDA. It's heads and beds. That's what they all relate to. That's where that occupancy tax comes from. And I think it's a cross-the-board input from two or three different entities is the reason why we're doing good. Main Street was full Saturday night. I was down here. It was full, good time, everybody having a good time. Fiber Fest, I stopped out there and talked to those folks. They had a profit-making weekend. So I think it's, I think it's in all fairness. I think it's multiple different groups that's contributed success of what's going on along with the art council.
We're shotgunning things.
I don't know how we're shotgunning things. Our fund balance is better than it's ever been.
Well, you are now proposing money. Where's it gonna come from?
It's spoken.
We have a balanced budget. It's gotta come from somewhere.
Quarter cent.
You know, that's, we have, yes, we do have a quarter cent. I worked myself for a week solid pressing for it out here. But I looked at it as probably the money that we're going to need to pay for the fuel for EMS. Fuel for law enforcement, Department of Social Services. That is money that is in the future. We don't know how it's gonna be. We are now entering into a recession.
Any else have any comments?
Yeah. We've been talking about what the future will hold for the chamber, what the future will hold for the county budget. I was part of that decision to give, to help support the chamber or the economic development, the combination that was made. Look back at those past two years, I've yet to see something, numbers. Have they produced ten- Have they produced ten jobs? Have they produced one job? Have they produced a hundred jobs? Then I look back, we said we would try to, we would support them for three years. Like to stay with what I said, but the reality is, where does the money come from in this budget? Do we go back and start taking it from one department, one entity? Do we come up with the total amount of money that we want to, that we want to give, that we probably need to give? It's, this time of year is probably the hardest time for the commissioners to come up with the budget. And I'm just stuck in between, you know, going back and looking at each department and taking a certain percentage or doing away with some line items. But then we start the whole budget process all over again. And we have a timeline. I'm just caught in between. I guess that's all I've got to say.
Any else?
Comments?
Chairman, I would like to ask a question. Segerol wise. Here on June sixth. Different circumstances we've gotten to June sixth, and we still don't have a budget to draft. Really don't want to wait till the next mid-month meeting. I don't want to wait till the end-of-month meeting. So sometime before this meeting is adjourned, I would ask that a special call meeting be conducted for the sole purpose of the budget. We I'm just hardly, we got other things we need to be doing. We need to get on with it. So I would ask at your discretion to set a date and time for a special meeting for the sole purpose of the consideration of the budget.
Being said, what kind of date are we looking at? A week or less than a week or?
It's forty-eight hour notice. So no sooner than Thursday.
Are you okay? How do you suit everybody's schedule?
This Friday, the tenth.
Upper paperwork will be in order.
You have a commitment?
About Thursday.
How many minutes?
Talking six o'clock? Is that night meeting or does it matter?
Six.
Been ample opportunity for comments. This, in my opinion, is a discussion amongst the commissioners and a vote by the commissioners. I don't know that it needs to occur after hours. It can occur during the day if need be, if that arranges.
Before Bobby? Either one, four o'clock Thursday.
Should be.
I'm good with it, four o'clock next Thursday.
Send a reminder, though.
We're talking June the ninth at four o'clock?
Make a motion that we table the fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three budget until June the ninth at sixteen hundred hours, four P.M. And I rescind my previous motion.
A motion, we'll hear a second, for Thursday at four P.M. Bobby seconds. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five o. Ms. Ham, go ahead.
We have several policy changes. The first one is actually the sick leave policy that the board approved several years ago. This is a sick leave sharing policy. If we have an employee that's out for an extended amount of time, it could be an accident. It could be planned surgery. It could be the results of the planned surgery didn't go well. It could be something terminal. In this policy, we have a cap on that of two-hundred-and-forty donated time hours from other employees. I can tell you, this has already been granted a couple of times because situations that we've had employees in. And we would just like to take that sentence out of the whole policy.
These individual?
Yes. Individually, please.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. No discussion. Hello.
Thank you. Next one, I believe, is the fire tax budget amendment. Correct, Drew? Okay. We need to budget to pay out what's left of the contingency and the vehicle tax that has been, for fire tax, that has been collected. We're basically trying to get this fund to a zero for the end of the fiscal year, to start it at a zero for next year. Incorporated in the budget is to pay out everything that's been collected with fire tax, not hold back any contingency like it's been done in the past couple of years. That's come out of multiple conversations with fire departments. And I think everyone has a consensus that's probably the best way to move forward. So this is budgeting the contingency that's left for the fire departments who have not requested any contingency and to get that paid out by the end of the fiscal year.
Any motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five o.
Believe the next one is just an EMS line item transfer request. We're gonna take sixteen thousand five hundred from full-time salaries since they have been down staff this year. We have the availability there. We need to put fifteen thousand in part-time. To, I think we need to go on that, Drew, maybe. Fifteen thousand to part-time EMS salaries and fifteen hundred dollars for medical supplies, for the increase in medical supplies for EMS.
The hard copy that you were supplied is the correct EMS.
She took proof. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Five o.
I think the next one is Public Works line item transfer. This is to budget for utilities, the increased cost of utilities with some of our facilities, plus the addition of the courtroom. We need to budget a little bit more money for that. So we're gonna take four thousand from Public Works salaries because they have been down a full-time person also. A little bit extra was budgeted in COA utilities and library utilities. And we're gonna move that to utilities in the Public Works and some auto maintenance.
Any other thing, a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. No discussion. Not all in favor? Five o. Number E is taken out.
The next one, library. Is that correct?
Capital.
School capital.
School capital, okay. School capital fund, we need to budget for three hundred additional to be paid out from sales tax revenues for the year. Doesn't mean that's all going to the school right now, but we need to transfer it into that separate fund for the school, for school capital outlay.
Moved. Second.
Moved and second. All in favor? Five o.
And the last one is the library fund. This is also a separate fund. I know a little history on this. It was put with the county several years ago to take care of the funds for the library, Memorial Book Fund. I believe it came out of maybe the construction of the library several-